Okay, so we're gonna do basically kind of three pages. So we're gonna do one on the four macromolecules, which I'm gonna start with. Then we're gonna do one on protein structure and have a little kind of quick summary of the dehydration synthesis versus hydrolysis underneath. And then we'll wrap up with water, because that was kind of where we started with. So my goal is that by the end of this, you've reviewed all the content and you know everything that's like a fact that you absolutely need for the test. Then you just need to be making sure you're comfortable with the types of questions. And that's what the MYAP content review multiple choice questions are for, is just do you know what that looks like in question format? Okay, so let's start with our big four with the elements. So that's basically just your cho-cho-chon-chop. So carbohydrates are gonna be cho, and that's in a one to two to one ratio. So they stand out from lipids because they have more oxygen than a lipid does. Lipids are carbon, hydrogen, and only a small amount of oxygen. So the long fatty acid tails do not have very much oxygen. So as a result, they tend to be more carbon-hydrogen based with a small amount of oxygen just right at the glycerol and fatty acid connection. Proteins are gonna be chan, and that's what's in every amino acid. And then some amino acids in their R group will have other things like sulfur and so forth. So every now and then you'll see another element pop up in its R group, but kind of the consistent thing in every amino acid is chan. And then nucleic acids are gonna be chop. There was a weird question on the questions you were looking at today, or if you're in Blue Day class, you're gonna see it tomorrow, where it basically asks which other biomolecule can need phosphorus? And so lipids, phospholipids, do actually require phosphorus as well. So in some cases, you'll see some lipids do actually have phosphorus if they're phospholipids involved in the cell membrane. So you definitely need to know your elements. It's always surprising how many questions look hard, but ultimately, it's just a variation of the cho-cho-chon-chop question. So it's just making sure that you know that. Okay, so structure, we're gonna be looking at what does it look like, including what functional groups does it contain? So for carbohydrates, you need to know that they tend to have that ring-shaped, aqueous solutions. So they can be straight carbon chains if they're not in a water solution. But if you think about living organisms, our bloodstreams, our cells are all aqueous solutions. So when they're in living organisms in us, they tend to form those ring-like structures. So if we kind of quickly, and we did an activity on this, and while I wouldn't necessarily say you have to memorize glucose, it's multiple choice test, you're not gonna have to draw it, I would like you to have kind of that understanding of what it looks like, remembering that everywhere it connects is a carbon. Except that one's in oxygen. So there's our shape of glucose. In terms of the functional groups, the only kind of functional group that's significant in our carbohydrate is gonna be the hydroxyls. And then when you have polymers, they form chains. So they're gonna form long chains, which is basically a bunch of hexagons in a row. We'll talk a little bit more about that when we do our polymerization. So I'm kind of doing one concept, kind of going down across this way. Okay, with lipids, lipids, we're gonna have our glycerol backbone. Okay, thank you, sorry. And then draw a ziggy line to show a whole lot more carbon hydrogens. So that kind of E shape. In terms of the functional groups, this, it was a carboxyl. Remember that we removed the hydrogen from to connect there? So it's a carboxyl slash a carbonal. So it was a carboxyl that we actually pulled the hydrogen off of. So technically, it's probably now a carbonal, but we can just call it a carboxyl. At this end, and then the methyl group at this end. And remember, that methyl group is important because that is what's hydrophobic. So that's what's responsible for making lipids hydrophobic, was responsible for making them not dissolve in fluid. If you've come a bit late, just catch where we're at, and you can copy from my sheet later. Okay, and then proteins. Proteins, you need to know the general shape. And if you did the questions today in fifth, and if not, you'll do it tomorrow, you'll see that does seem to come up quite a bit, having a good understanding of the general shape of an amino acid. So here's my amino group on this end, here's my carboxyl A group on this end, and here's my R chain. So remember, your R chain is what makes each amino acid unique. I switched my light and dark purple, sorry. In terms of our functional group, remember, this is an amino group. On one end, and a carboxyl end on the other. And then when we look at nucleic acids, each nucleotide has that three-part structure. So it's gonna have the sugar. It's then gonna have a phosphate group. And then over here, it has a nitrogen base. In terms of what functional groups it has, this whole thing is a phosphate group, so that is a functional group. Within our N base, there is an amino group. And then because that's a sugar, it's gonna have hydroxyl groups as well. So it happens to kind of the most different functional groups when you look at nucleic acids, because of its three-part structure. And really, I probably could've done the monomer one first, because I've basically drawn the monomer for each one, but we'll go through that now. So one carbohydrate unit is a monosaccharide. And monosaccharides join together to form polysaccharides. So monosaccharide being one, many being poly. Lipids are a little bit unusual. So three fatty acids plus one glycerol, join together to make a triglyceride. Triglycerides don't chain, so they're not kind of true polymers. And the true polymer should just be many, 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 many parts all together, and these are kind of isolated individual ones. So they're kind of a little bit different in terms of how we define monomer and polymer, but as long as you know three fatty acids and a glycerol together make a triglyceride, you should be good with that. With proteins, of course, each one is an amino acid. Amino acids join together to make polypeptides, which then fold to make proteins. And we will talk about, kind of review that. So the immediate polymer is a polypeptide. Once that polypeptide has been folded, then it's a true protein. And the nucleic acids, the monomer is nucleotides. And when the nucleotides chain together, that's when we call it a nucleic acid. Okay, so then polymerization, which is always done with dehydration synthesis, we're just reviewing kind of how, what you have to collect to make it, if you will. So where the OH and H come from? So in every case, it's gonna be an OH and an H, but we're just going through kind of where that comes from. So in this case, the OH has to come from carbon one, the H comes from carbon four, and they form a 1-4 glycosidic linkage. With lipids, and if you're in my fourth period, we're gonna finish this next time, so we haven't really done this yet, so you can go ahead and pre-review it, but we're gonna talk more about it next time. The OH has to come from the glycerol. And the H has to come from this end of the fatty acid. So it comes from the carboxyl. You can't take it from the other end, or it would mess up the properties of the fatty acid. And they form what's called an ester linkage. With proteins, we have to take the OH from the carboxyl end, the H from the amino end, and that's called a peptide bond. And then with nucleic acids, we actually take the OH from the phosphate group, which then causes it to bond like that, and the H from the sugar. And that bond is called a phosphodiester bond. So you kind of had this information, part of it you had in your glued table, part of it you had in your diagram, so I was just trying to create one place where you could kind of look up the key facts on all of it. Okay, examples with functions. So this we did on your cards, but I wanna go through them and make sure kind of the main ones that I would want you to recognize that you know. So the most important carbohydrate is glucose, and glucose is the reactive for glycolysis, which ultimately makes ATP. If it's in aerobic slide respiration in eukaryotes, then the products of glycolysis go into, of course, the other sections and eventually makes a whole lot of ATP. But for all organisms, glucose can make ATP through glycolysis. Fructose, then, is similar, it's just sweeter, and it's found in fruit and nectar. So plants can actually kind of change the chemical structure slightly of glucose to create a sweeter product for the parts of the plant that they wanna sweeten for the purposes of seed dispersal and pollination. Sucrose is actually a disaccharide, so glucose plus fructose equals sucrose. So it's a disaccharide, and it's very sweet. So all three of those are called simple sugars, meaning they're either in monosaccharide or disaccharide form, and they taste sweet to the taste. So if you were to eat it, it would taste sweet to you, because they're already in simple sugar form and can be immediately kind of made into energy sources. In terms of complex carbohydrates, I want you to know starch. And starch is actually the same thing as amylose. So starch is actually kind of a, more of a dietary term, so we call it starch in our day-to-day life. The actual scientific name for it is amylose, and you'll notice it then has the O's. So sugars end in O's. So a lot of times, it seems strange that starch wouldn't, but it's the official scientific term, is amylose. And this is plant storage. So plants don't have the ability to convert carbohydrates into body fat, so they store it as amylose or starch. Cellulose is another one you should know. Again, there's your O's, and that's gonna be your plant cell walls. And this is also a common dietary fiber. So fiber is a slightly more broad term that can mean things other than cellulose, but cellulose is one of the main forms. So when you eat plants, the cellulose is in their cell walls, we can't actually break that down, so it kind of moves straight through us. And the other one which name is a little bit weird is glycogen. And glycogen is short-term energy storage in animals. That's the one that lives in our liver for, say, 12 hours, that just allows us to have gaps in between eating and still live off of that simple sugar. So we put it in little chains, stint it to our liver, and then we can get by without eating for a period of time by living off our glycogen. So those are the main ones I would want you to know. If you saw a question about it, you should identify that they are carbohydrates and have some idea of their function. Okay, so let's look at lipids. So most lipids that we talk about are triglycerides, which are the E shape, and those are what we tend to think of as kind of body fat. So that's gonna be for energy storage. And body fat is a remarkable adaptation that means you can eat something now and use energy from it 10 years from now. So it's this long-term ability to retain energy. It's also important because it is both insulation and organ protection. So body fat is intended to retain heat and protect our organs and kind of damage. So even if it wasn't just for energy purposes, you need to have some body fat for those reasons. So those are kind of the main things that we tend to think of when we think of lipids as triglycerides. The other really important category, though, is phospholipids. And phospholipids are not triglycerides, actually duoglycerides or diglycerides. So they don't have an E shape, they have two tails and a phosphate group. So they are slightly different structure than a triglyceride, because they have that phospho added onto it, and that makes up the cell membranes. We're gonna do cells next, so you don't need to know all the details about that right now, but the phospholipid bilayer, which provides that fluidity and allows some things through, is because of phospholipids. And then the other thing that we talked about was your steroid hormones are actually fats. And the main ones that fall into that category are sex hormones. So estrogen, testosterone, things like that are made up of fats. So those are the only kind of three main cat things I want you to know, is that most are triglycerides, which are your traditional kind of fats, waxed oils, phospholipids are unique, and then our steroid hormones. Proteins, lots and lots of different things. So the main thing that protein is, is our body tissue. So that's gonna be our bone, skin, muscle, blood plasma. So most of your body, other than your fat. So your fat is obviously fat, but the rest of your body is basically made up of protein. Therefore, one of the main, main things that we use protein for is growth and repair. So if you wanna grow, you have to have enough protein to build new body tissue. So whether that's trying to grow your muscles, or trying to grow taller, any sort of body growth other than fat relies on protein, but also repair. So even if you're not actively getting bigger, we do repair kind of damaged tissues as we go. Probably the next most important category you know about is enzymes. And we are not, we're doing enzymes with the energy unit, because that's where College Board puts it. So we don't need to know tons about it now, but you definitely need to know that they are proteins and that they speed up chemical reactions in the body. So they make your body work more efficiently. So you saw kind of one of the FRQ questions, it was like about bromelain and enzyme, and it made sure that you knew that it was a protein, and that you knew that if it's shape changed and a function changed, reactions would happen less quickly or efficiently. So that kind of level of information. Antibodies is another important one. So antibodies are actual proteins that travel through your bloodstream and fight infections. And there's a few others that we talked about, you probably don't necessarily need to know for this test, like channel proteins in the membrane, that help with transport, and cyclin-dependent kinases, which are actually enzymes that play a role in the cell cycle. So those are ones that are gonna be important in kind of our next couple of units. The main thing for kind of where we're at right now is these two. So you need to be very, very, very clear that enzymes are proteins, and you need to understand that most body tissue is made up of protein as well. And then for nucleic acids, there's kind of four things I would like you to know. And of course, the two most important ones are gonna be your DNA and RNA. So your DNA is gonna be your instructions for proteins that stay in the nucleus. Your RNA is gonna be involved in actually using the instructions to make proteins. You do not, for this test, have to know the types of RNA. So you don't need to know messenger RNA versus transfer RNA versus RRNA. Probably be a good idea just to know there are different types, but you need to know just generally RNA is involved in protein synthesis, without having to necessarily know the parts. The other two things that we said, it's just worth knowing, just so you know that more than DNA and RNA, is that ATP is actually a nucleotide, that is the main source of cellular energy. So it's an adenine nucleotide with two extra phosphates.
How many times have you done it, like, 3:30 or 4:00?
I don't know, probably between 3:45 and 4:00, probably done by 4:00. And then, last year is about now. And then GAD and FAD, which are actually coenzymes that play a role in cellular respiration, they are actually nucleotides as well. So that's just so that we know that besides DNA and RNA, nucleotides do play some other roles. Okay, and then the last thing is just any kind of random facts that we need to, you need to specifically know for that type. So for carbohydrates, the other fact I want you to know is the difference between simple and complex. So the first three are gonna be simple sugars. And simple sugars taste sweet, and they provide immediate energy. So if you were feeling really like you just needed a bolt of energy, the best thing you could have would probably be fructose, or something that's sweetened with sucrose. So eat something that tastes sweet to you, and your body doesn't have to spend any time really digesting it, it's already in kind of monomer form, so boom, you'll get immediate energy. If you don't wanna know rush of energy, and instead you want enough energy to last you through the day, you wanna actually eat not something super sweet, but something that's a complex carbohydrate. And those are gonna be bread-y instead of sweet, so bread, vegetables, et cetera, and they have slow-releasing energy. So because your body has to take some time to break them down, it doesn't give you all the energy at once. So that's why having like whole wheat pasta, something like that, having, you know, toast, whole wheat toast in the morning, would give you energy not just when you eat it, but throughout the day. There's a seat up here, too, if anyone wants to, there's a couple closer if you wanna move, yeah. Okay, the thing that you need to know for lipids is saturated versus unsaturated. So with our saturated fats, these are gonna be our solids, but they come from animals, and they're gonna have the no double bonds. So these are the ones that are gonna look like a straight E, so all of the fatty acid chains are gonna be straight. Because of that, they're dense, which is why they tend to be solid at room temperature, and more likely to be used to kind of store body fat. So they're a little bit less healthy, and this is that they're more likely to add extra body fat, which if you don't need that, can be problematic. Unsaturated, on the other hand, are less dense, and tend to be liquid at room temperature, but not always. So nuts, avocado, things like that are unsaturated fats that's still solid. The better thing is that these are generally thought of as plant-based, and they're gonna have at least one double bond. Sorry, normally I will not have to grow this low, but I was, I could fit it in. So this time, my E is gonna look less straight, and it's gonna have more kinks in it. Those kinks are what actually keep it from being less dense, is what means that it can't kind of squish in as well. And that's why it tends to be more liquidy, and also is why your body uses it less for packing on fat and more for other purposes, because it's harder to pack in. For proteins, we're just gonna make a note that you have to know the four levels of protein structure. We're gonna do a separate thing on that, because we're not gonna try and cram it in that little space. So make a note, you need to know your four levels of protein structure. And the other thing to know is that the shape or structure, which basically means the same thing, determines the function. So that's just kind of a fact that comes up quite a lot, that if you change the shape or structure of a protein, you alter its function. Okay, and then for nucleic acids, we talked about this a little bit today, slash for a little tomorrow, our DNA versus RNA. And I'm just gonna do like the world's simplest version of it right now. DNA is double-stranded, RNA is single. DNA has deoxyribose. RNA has ribose. DNA has thymine. RNA has uracil. Again, you don't have an FRQ, so you probably don't need to know, so long as you know T and U, you'd probably be fine. So that's my attempt at all things Big Four that you need to know. So with the exception of this, which we'll talk about now, that's kind of everything else you desperately need to know about your Big Four. It's kind of the same stuff that was in the chart that you glued, but this was just a chance for you to have it kind of all in your own writing in one place. If you would like to take a picture of that before I erase, feel free. And I am recording it, so if you want to go back. Okay, so I'm going to rapidly erase this and set up a new little chart. If you need a snack break while I do that, I'll be like 90 seconds doing all this, two minutes, so have a snack if you didn't grab one on your way in. Hi, for watching, you're gonna watch this, because I don't wanna have to merge videos together. I did mine vertical. Is that the right answer? Yeah, I just did it vertical, but you can do it sideways, it's really up to you. This is not, yeah, you can do it vertical if you want, or horizontal, it doesn't take up quite a snootch space. Yes, you probably only need half a page, and we'll put something below it about dehydration synthesis.
Have the same.
Have a page, and vertical if you want. That's your vertical. Why is everyone being me? No, it's you.
Yes. Are we gonna be like writing a lot like this? Like, is it better to do it vertical or...
No, I managed it on a vertical, but if you have the space and you wanna do it, I don't know. However, make you happy. No, I, I managed it on a, on a vertical, but personally, if you have the space and you want to do it, I don't know. However, may you have... So generally, when we do these diagrams, my goal is just to present it in a different way than we did it in class. Like, I won't redraw the same diagram. So in class, we kind of did it more as like a first this than this, and this time I'm just doing it kind of comparing the levels in terms of their definition, what bonds are involved, and then kind of any key facts that you need to know. So same information, just trying to present it a different way, just so you have something different to study. Usually I try to make these a little bit simpler, so that you're not having to go through as much when you're studying for the test. You're just finding a place to find your key facts. I'm not going to do little drawings with the different colors. You have that in your class notes, and that just takes a long time. So for the sake of keeping this shorter, you can refer back to your notes for your kind of pretty pictures of these. So basically, for each one, you need to know what it is. And then this is important, and this was in our other information, but I thought may have been a little bit less super clear to find. So the other thing you need to know is what kind of bonds define this structure. So what are the bonds that are actually creating that? And then this is just kind of random facts. So other information that might be relevant to that type, that I thought you should probably know. And so up here, I wrote something that should be clear, because I just wrote that enzymes are proteins. But I find that in a lot of cases, the question doesn't actually ask about it as a protein, and the question will say an enzyme, and it expects you to make the connection that we're still talking about these same four levels. So I just emphasize that, that this is the same thing as if I said enzyme structure, since an enzyme is a protein. So just kind of know it both ways. The four structures of a protein could also be asked as the four structures of an enzyme, and the answers would be the same. So your primary structure is just the sequence of amino acids. And this time I'm going to go this way, just to be different. And amino acids are held together by bonds called peptide bonds. And peptide bonds are strong, covalent bonds. So there's some other info that I want you to specifically know about the primary structure. First of all, the order depends on the DNA or mRNA sequence. So which amino acid goes where depends on what's in your DNA sequence. As a result, the primary structure is impacted by mutations. So if you have a mutation that changes the DNA, then it's going to change your primary structure. So if the question specifically is like, the mutation, what does it impact? Well, it's going to impact that primary structure, because DNA tells you the primary structure. Therefore, if you have a mutation, it's going to change it. The actual building of this is done in the process of translation at the ribosome. And we're going to do a whole genome protein synthesis in like January, so you're way away from needing to know exactly what translation is specifically, but I would like you to know that kind of protein synthesis, that second part of a translation, what you're actually doing is putting together amino acids. And then the last thing you need to know is that the bonds are formed through dehydration synthesis, which is what we just kind of mentioned before when we talked about what things you have to remove. So those are all the things I would want you to know about primary structure. And in general, I can tell you, primary and tertiary are your most important ones. So you need to know a lot about primary, a lot about tertiary. Secondary and quaternary are less kind of crucial, because quaternary is really similar to tertiary, and secondary is usually less important. So this is kind of my key one that you need to know about, this one and this one. Most questions are going to kind of be talking about that. So then, your secondary structure is then when you take that linear sequence of proteins, and it folds in a predictable pattern. So the key here is it's not a very unique pattern. There's two options, it either coils or folds. So it's going to take that polypeptide, and it's going to make its first kind of folding, and it's going to be kind of a consistent style, that's always going to be the same. This is done exclusively through hydrogen bonds. So hydrogen bonds are going to be what are responsible for this. There's two options. It's either going to coil, so this is an alpha helix, or it does this kind of wave and then folds back on itself, and this is a beta sheet. These are more stable, so they're more stable or resistant to kind of changes. Because changing out individual amino acids, or changing environmental conditions, isn't necessarily going to cause it to go from an alpha helix to a beta sheet, if you will. So generally, they can withstand a fair amount of change, and not alter the secondary structure as much compared to kind of the other ones. Okay, so then tertiary structure is where it's a unique folding based on specific R group interactions. And this is really important, because every protein is going to fold differently. So while this is common and predictable, this is where it's really unique, and it depends on the R groups. So those are kind of the two things you need to know. It's what R groups does it have, and therefore it's going to be very, very unique. There are lots of different types of bonds that can contribute to this. So there's disulfide bridges, which are the strongest bonds, that attach sulfur groups on cysteins. There's more hydrogen bonds. They can actually form ionic or covalent bonds. They can form hydrophobic interactions, where the non-polar parts join together. They can form like van der Waals interactions, basically any kind of sort of chemical bond. So there's the most kind of diversity there. So if you change the R group, you're usually going to change the tertiary structure. So because this is based on the R groups, if you change the properties of the R groups, you're going to change the tertiary structure. And this is really, these two combined, give it the unique shape that suits its function. So this is really where you see between these two, that connection between shape and function. So the unique folds that are involved here is going to give it its unique function. So it needs to be folded just like this to carry out its function. One thing that we haven't really talked about, because we're going to talk, usually talk more about it when we get to enzymes, but it's worth mentioning here, that if you have an extreme environmental change, you can actually denature a protein, which means it can actually change its shape due to kind of extreme environments. So any sort of environmental extremes can alter this. So environmental extremes can damage this layer, and that term is denature. And that term we usually use with an enzyme, but it can be of any protein. So if you're in a highly acidic, highly hot environment, something like that, some of these weaker kind of bonds will start to kind of come apart, and then that will unfold a bit, and then will no longer have the correct shape, and then that's going to impact its function. So anything that does that. So the tertiary structure can be changed by a mutation that changed the primary structure, or it can be changed by an environmental extreme that kind of caused it to start to unfold and broke some of those bonds. So this is probably kind of your most sensitive layer, because it's affected by both mutations and by environmental extremes. So it can kind of very easily be damaged. And then your quaternary structure is just very similar to your tertiary, but if, for a lot of cases, it's multiple polypeptides coming together. Not all proteins have a quaternary structure. So some proteins are only a single polypeptide. So in some cases, it doesn't have a quaternary structure, if it's a lone polypeptide. But if it has multiple polypeptides, the quaternary structure is going to be when multiple polypeptides then bond together. And it's going, and again, it's going to be R groups. So the R groups from one is going to bond with the R groups from another. So it's really the exact same thing as tertiary structure, same kind of bonds. So we're just going to write same as tertiary. Because it's R group interactions, same type of bonds, it's just between polypeptides. And so this is now a protein. So once it has all four levels, and then basically these same kind of things otherwise apply. So it can also be impacted by mutations that change R groups. It can also be impacted by environmental extremes and be denatured. So yeah, the most important thing I would say is feel like you're very comfortable with your primary and your tertiary. Don't worry terribly much about secondary and quaternary if there are multiple polypeptides. It's just basically another tertiary. Okay, and then I want to write under that chart just a couple sentences about dehydration synthesis and hydrolysis. So if you want to take a picture of that first, you can. And then we're going to add a couple sentences, and then we're going to do our water. So it'll probably be done by about 3:45. The other thing I want to be clear on is that we know when is it asking about dehydration synthesis versus when it's asking about hydrolysis. So those are your two processes. So if you're going monomer plus monomer to build a polymer, which process is that? That is dehydration synthesis. Some of the other terms that you'll see, so just making sure you can recognize it under different terms. So sometimes you'll see this referred to as building. You can see it as synthesizing. You can see it as polymerization. You can see it referred to as growth or repair. So anytime it's, you see that they're clearly creating. So anytime you're making or creating something, you're going to need dehydration synthesis. When you do that, we already talked about this in details, I'm not going to go into a lot about it. You remove OH from one monomer. You remove hydrogen from another. Therefore, what are you doing with water?
Releasing.
Releasing. So there's different ways you can say. You can say releasing, it can say removing, it can say making water. So the idea is that water is at the end product. So you end with water rather than starting with it. I don't think dehydration's and this, or hydrolysis are very hard. I'm just trying to make sure you recognize that sometimes they'll use different language for it, so that you can see different terms, and still kind of know that that's which process it's talking about. Hydrolysis, on the other hand, is when you start with a polymer, and your polymer is broken down into monomers. So that is hydrolysis. Generally, what I find is students know dehydration synthesis well, because we go into quite a bit of detail about this. So because we talked quite a bit about which things you remove, you kind of are like, I know dehydration synthesis. And then you get a bit thrown off if the question's actually asking you about hydrolysis. So just making sure you know that that's the other process. This would be if you see something like breaking down. The other word you'll often see is digesting. So anything along those lines, so breakdown, digest. And this time, remember, you're going to have to add water. So you're going to have to add water to stabilize the monomers. So you're going to have to actually start with water. And that water is going to be important, because otherwise, when you break the bonds of the polymer, it will come right back together. So you need the water in order to actually keep them apart from one another. Yeah, some things sometimes you'll see is it'll refer more specifically to breaking bonds. Some might say breaking peptide bonds, or breaking the bonds holding a carbohydrate together. So again, those should be pretty easy. I don't think any of the questions on are super hard, but just making sure you don't get them confused, so you can get all the questions right. And then the last thing we're going to go over is water. And then you should know kind of all the content you need to know. And then it's just a matter of practicing questions, and making sure you can figure out kind of the weird ways in which they like to ask about things. Sorry, does anyone want to take a picture of that screen? I will give you one second if you do. Okay, so we're going to do water kind of as a flow chart. So this therefore this causes this. So this, therefore, this causes this. Yes. I'd probably start another page. There is. It should be. Okay. So water. And it's kind of a slightly odd place that they put water in this unit. So the, all the rest of it kind of seems to go together. So we're like, here's our big four, and then more on proteins, and then more on how you build the poli, and then there's like water. So it's a little bit removed from the rest. It does relate to the chemical makeup of water, so I think, you know, and this is the other chemical makeup. So I think that's kind of why it all got stuck together. But this is probably the part that belongs least well to the rest of it. So that's why I wanted to kind of leave it to the end. So here's my water, which is H2O. I did it vertically. And so when water bonds together, it forms, of course, strong covalent bonds between the hydrogen and oxygen. But they don't share the electrons quite evenly. So the electrons get pulled a little bit closer to the oxy, or to the oxygen. So the oxygen has a slight negative charge, or you can say it is electronegative. The hydrogen just pulls it slightly less close to them, so they have a slight positive charge. The main thing is to know the charges, but you remember we did that one FRQ? They did make you actually use the word like electronegative, or explain it in terms of electrons pulling. So you do need to have some idea of kind of why does it have the slight negative? And that's basically because it pulls the electrons more. So what do we call that? This difference in charges means that water is? Polar. So that's, the slight positives and slight negatives is what gives it is polarity. Another thing that you can see, it brings us, is charged, which kind of means the same thing, polar is a better term for it. And polar substances are attracted to what? Other polar substances. So think like mag, same kind of idea, it's magnets, magnetic things are attracted to other magnetic things. If it's non, if it's one thing's magnetic, one's not, they won't be attracted. So polar loves polar. Therefore, so again, I'm kind of doing it, it's almost like a step by step kind of showing you how these are all related. So the structure of water is what makes it polar. Its polarity is what allows water to create hydrogen bonds with each other. So polarity gives rise to the hydrogen bonds. So a bunch of water molecules join together by these hydrogen bonds, because the oxygen of one is attracted to the hydrogen of another one, and so forth. So they create the bonds between water molecules. And you have to know, it was on the progress check questions, if you've done those already, that basically it's the oxygen of one to the hydrogen of another. So the negative oxygen to the hot positive hydrogen of another, that's what forms the actual hydrogen bonds. So if you wanna just kind of make a note of that, if you don't think that's super obvious from your diagram, the negative oxygen of one water molecule is attracted to the positive hydrogen of another. And then this is really, directly or indirectly, what gives rise to the properties. So most of its properties are almost all related to the polarity and to the fact that it forms hydrogen bonds. So there was eight that we went through, so we're just gonna kind of list them in like a one-word explanation. So I'm not gonna go all the way into all of them again. We're just gonna kind of list what they are and making sure we know what they mean. So first, we said water has cohesive properties. So cohesion is just water bonding with water. So those are the bonds between water molecules. Then, because polar loves polar, water can also attract to things that are not water but are polar, and that's adhesion. So that's the bond between water and other polar substances. Then both of those kind of relate to some other things, including surface tension. So light objects don't break the bonds. So the hydrogen bonds along the surface of water actually give it some stability that isn't broken by something that's quite light. Then we have capillary action. So capillary action is the combination of cohesion and adhesion, allowing water to move up. And this is particularly important for xylem in plants. So this is what allows water to move up the xylem in plants. A couple things that relate to then how it, kind of, the bonds and how stable they are relate to kind of temperature changes. So it has a high heat capacity. And the high heat capacity says it takes a lot of energy to increase it by one degree. So water does not naturally warm up very quickly, which is important, because it means that it's not gonna just change every time its environment changes. Similarly to that is the high heat of vaporization. And high heat of vaporization says that it takes a lot of energy to turn it into gas. And remember, we said that is actually beneficial. So I'm just gonna write sweat cools to remind us of that. Because what that means is to, in order for you to sweat, you have to actually release quite a lot of energy to turn your sweat into vapor, so for your sweat to evaporate off your body. And in doing so, you're actually releasing energy, and that's, release is heat, and that's how your body cools down. Last two, I'm gonna put them over here, but if you still have room, I just, I don't want you to have to all look very hard. Then the next one is ice floats. So ice is actually less dense than water. And remember, that's because the bonds crystallize. So at the colder temperatures, they actually have less fluidity and flexibility, and so they actually pull a little bit away from each other and get really static and rigid. And then that doesn't allow it to move, and so they tend to expand out. And that's important, because that's what allows ice to float to the top, which is what keeps water temperature underneath lower. And the last thing is because of its polarity, it makes an excellent solvent, because things that are also polar tend to dissolve in it. And things that are ionic tend to be able to separate out, so they tend to break the ionic bonds to go with the bonds of the water. So it dissolves polar and ionic substances. It does not dissolve nonpolar substances. So it is not a universal solvent. The term universal solvent's a slight misnomer, because anything that is nonpolar will not dissolve in water, so only things that are polar. So if you know all of those things on those diagrams, that's kind of all the important content. There's still skills involved in being able to read and interpret questions. So you're gonna do the My AP Progress Check again at home. If you're in my fourth period, you haven't done it yet, but in fifth period, we did it in class. Then you're gonna log into My AP and do it again, it should be assigned to you in there. And that's just practice. If you can go back over those questions and know that you understand the question and how you would find the answer, that's kind of the most similar to what the test questions are gonna be like.